Thank, we're ready.
Do we have video going?
Yes, we have video, we have sound, so we have two out of three that we said.
Okay, motion to call the meeting to order, is there a second please?
A second.
Roll call.
Okay, trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lyken.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, first of all, please silence your cell phones. And is there any board member who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding the item before us, which is a discussion of a resolution put forth by trustee Lyken to withdraw support for the previous court's decision to give a letter of support for the Cometa application? Is there anything to disclose from anybody?
I do not.
I do not.
Would you say more?
I do not.
Okay, I do not. Okay, with that being said, would you please give us the Cliff Notes of the open meeting compliance certification?
Correct. The public will have opportunities to comment on specific agenda items when they occur in the meeting and also in general matters at the end. Speakers can comment once in each comment window. This is not a debate deposition or panel discussion. Speakers must move to the front of the room if physically able. Alternatively, they speak from, provide comments from where they are seated. If attending the meeting via Zoom, please raise your hand or put your comments in the Q and A. If you put it in the Q and A, I will ask the question for you. If you raise your hand, I will allow you to speak. Please provide your name and address while doing that. In organization, there shall be an exemption for any category of people protected by New York state law. Let me see here, where's my favorite? Speakers must observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste. Let the game begin.
Okay, so with that being said, I think I'll turn this over to trustee Lyken because we had initiated this particular meeting.
Thank you. So as Mayor Plummer accurately stated, I did put forth a resolution to essentially rescind support for a previous letter that was issued by the board, which said that we were in agreement that the developer should receive Cometa support for the property at 75 Monroe. I do have, provided by our clerk, the resolution was copied in that. I believe the public also has access to that resolution, if anybody wishes.
It's probably a notice meeting, I'll tell.
So if you need a copy, please let us know and we can provide one to you. But I won't read the entire thing since everyone does have it in front of them or accessible to them. But essentially, it is as stated. And I would like to hear the board's thoughts and then go to the public, if that's okay with everyone.
Any thoughts from the board?
So my first one is just a point of clarity. Where is it available online for the public? Only because the typical place to go, which is the calendar and pulling up the agenda, there's no link there to it.
It's in the board section, it's in with the packet.
It's in with the board section.
Yep, it's there, it should be actually in the other section.
So it's not in the?
Oh, maybe it only made it into one section.
It is there.
But it's not, it's.
It's there. If you go to the board meeting for this today, it is there in the document. It's, you see the agenda and you roll forth the.
Is it in the primary meeting agenda, as in the 6:30 meeting?
No, it's in the 4:30.
There's no attach.
It's in the Cometa section.
It's there.
Okay.
Can you see it, Dave?
Yep, it's in the Cometa section. Okay. So just for the public who may be listening, the resolution as presented by trustee Lyken is available in the 5:30 link, not the 4:30 link for today's discussion.
Oh, I thought it was in this.
It should have been.
Okay, okay. Thanks for the correction then, thanks for the patch. No, that's great, thank you. It's on the website, it's on the website.
Too many on this day.
Three meetings in a row, we have a trifecta, yeah.
Are there any other comments from the board about this particular resolution? Any other thoughts, or should we gather thoughts from the public?
I mean, I think I've made my thoughts clear in prior meetings. So, yeah, there's people wishing to speak. And also, Dorothy, check for people online as well.
Yep.
Okay.
And we can offer comment as well after the fact rather than in.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. It's a special meeting, it's all special.
We're all special.
So just as well, hear from the public and offer some feedback after.
Sure, is there anybody wishing to speak? We have received your comments as well in writing from some of you there too. So, yes. Hi, Mike.
Mike Reynolds, 35 Church Street. You've seen my comments about questioning whether the DEC reimbursed most of the cleanup costs and also questioning whether the canal access isn't of any significance. We already had access to most of the canal in the village. But there's one more aspect of it that I hadn't spoken of before. And that is whether one restaurant should get a big tax break that our other village restaurants don't get. And whether one landlord should get a big tax break that our other village landlords don't get.
Thank you, actually, we can speak to the restaurant issue, the letter of support excluded a tax break for the restaurant.
Okay.
Yeah, it only supported the residential component of the project, which is typical for Cometa.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have the letter from, that was sent to Cometa, the first letter that was approved by the other board?
I do not have that letter present.
Does anybody have that letter? Because it might be.
It's online from the previous packet when it was approved.
It might be helpful to pull that out and read that.
I have to go online.
I mean, to the community, so, because I thought that there was a discussion about whether the restaurant was included or not, and I think.
The final letter excluded the restaurant.
Yes, yes, yes.
Anyone else wishing to comment or speak? Are there any folks online?
Let me see here. I did receive correspondence prior. And trustee Lampier could send an email to the board. I do not care.
Which we received. The board has seen that, yes, thank you.
And I forwarded the correspondence received from Justin Wiestra to the board.
Thank you.
And those, I believe, he wanted read into the record specific to, I think, the public hearing for both Cometa as well now. I don't mind reading things virgally into the record. We have the time to do that.
You're welcome to read it, or I, I will, the Cometa hearing is the Cometa hearing. I will not represent Mr. Wiestra at that meeting and do that for the village board, that's one thing, but for Cometa, no.
Just so everybody understands, Cometa is, our folks here from the county, it is their hearing. They have asked to use our room because it takes place in our village and in our community. We simply are providing the facility for them at 5:30 to have their hearing for the public. So we, we're not involved in that as such, you know, we're just, we're hosting.
Right. If the board wishes me to read Mr. Wiestra's comment, I can do that.
I don't mind reading it.
Yeah, I would like to hear it.
Whoever would like to read any.
You want me to do it?
Sure, sure.
Okay, if you don't mind, I couldn't quite.
No, I have it right here.
Here, she's got it for you.
I'll just read out trustee Lampier's as well. I wish to address the board as a private citizen to the mayor and board of trustees. This is from Lou Lambeer, 14 Jackson Park. Although I'm unable to be present at the special meeting of the board on May 11, 2023, I respectfully request that the statement be attached below in this email to be read into the record, either at the special meeting or the regular meeting, based on the discretion and decision of the board statement. As a village trustee, I requested that the board be provided with information regarding the Cometa application, which would provide projections on the assessment and abatement relief being sought for by the project at 75 Monroe. That information did not become publicly available till May 1, 2023. Based on the information provided in said application by Pittsburgh Canal Side Properties, I wish to convey to the board of trustees my support as a private citizen for any action the board may see as appropriate regarding the revocation of previous letters of support for Cometa funding. Thank you, Lou Lambeer, 14 Jackson Park.
Okay. Any other comments?
He's got.
And then? Oh, there's more.
Justin's.
Oh, you have, I didn't realize you had his as well.
So this is from Justin Wiestra, Village Pittsburgh resident.
His address?
I don't have his street address.
He's on about.
17 Barton Avenue.
There we go, thanks, thanks, Mike, 17 Barton.
This to the village board trustees and County Monroe Industrial Development Agency, Cometa. I'm out of town this week on business and unable to attend in person or virtually, and would like to comment on this project, so I'm requesting that these be fully written in the record and not abbreviated. The stated topic of this meeting is to present a copy of 75 Monroe application to Cometa to the public to hear comments at the public hearing. I have not been able to find a copy of this application or presentation on the village website where this hearing is announced. Cometa's public hearing notice and meeting does not state where a copy can be found or whom to contact. Second, I have heard that the estimated value of this project is $50 million and tax relief is sought. I do not see budget information on the village website indicating total assessed taxable property value, or I do see budget information on the village website indicating total assessed taxable property value of $165 million for the entire Village Pittsburgh. The $50 million project cost would make this project 30% of all property in the Village Pittsburgh. Only 1,369 people reside in the village per the 2020 census. An additional 156 apartments would be a large population increase. Seeking tax relief for such a staggering percentage of a municipality to benefit private industry is unconscionable. I am requesting denial of the village tax relief and mortgage tax relief sought for this project. I have no opinion on requests for county, town, school, and sales tax relief, as I'm assuming it is a very small percentage of property in those municipalities. Village property taxes are dwarfed by these other taxes, and without village property tax relief from this project will minimally impact finances for this project. The Village of Pittsburgh Planning Board reviewed the tax impact of the project in 2012 and came to the conclusion that it would be a wash. More residents and infrastructure will require more services, so the additional tax revenue will pay for additional required services. The developer is requesting the village maintain infrastructure installed by the developer, and additional residents will in fact need services. I'm deeply concerned that residents will be required to pay a massive tax increase if Cometa approves the village tax relief sought to cover the cost of these services. The tax increase will come in addition to existing tax increases that residents have been required to pay to cover the review of the 75 Monroe application for the last decade. While residents may have opinions on the cost of litigation over 75 Monroe, few realize that just reviewing these applications has been enormously expensive. Hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars have been spent on consultants, attorneys, staff, just to review the applications even if they are approved. This cost is in addition to the litigation cost to respond to lawsuits brought by the developer. Village residents have already been subject to tax increases to pay for this project. Am I being asked to potentially pay an additional 30% property tax hike to pay for the tax relief? Everything about this request and the project is bad for residents that already live in the village. The monetary cost comes in addition to the following negative impact to residents. Additional traffic and dangers incurred from inadequate traffic calming. Monroe Ave is already over capacity, and residents have great difficulty leaving driveways on Monroe Avenue. The traffic for this project found it unsafe due to limited visibility distance between the driveway and high-speed vehicles crusting the canal bridge. The traffic study also found it would be nearly impossible to exit the 75 Monroe site at afternoon rush hour. I personally witnessed this dangerous intersection as I was in a traffic accident in front of the 75 Monroe driveway. I was rear-ended because a car behind me could not stop in time. Elimination of street trees on Sutherland Street to install new water lines for the project is also a negative impact to residents. As well, the elimination of city skyline views and Erie Canal views on Sutherland and the Sutherland High School athletic fields to construct a 270-foot-long four-story building that will be the largest building in the Village of Pittsburgh.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments here?
I'm asking Justin if he can pull up the letter. I think that it's really important for both village residents and for the developer to hear the letter that was approved by the last board. I mean, it just makes sense, right? That's why we're here. We're comparing the letter that was approved last time with the letter that we want to present to board.
Well, excuse me for a second, I think.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great, thank you, thank you.
Looks like.
Yes, it was sent out after that.
Thank you, Dorothy, I appreciate it. Mike, did you get your answer about the DEC cleanup?
No.
Does anybody have any answer for that?
Maybe not.
So?
So any information you folks have? Okay.
Because I know, you know, walking the streets, I think that was a big concern, you know, that that's been floated around quite a bit. Well, the developer came and spent tons and tons of money to do this cleanup. And then there's kind of, you know, that talk about what did they get in return and how did that, you know, correlate? Exactly how much they.
Well, there are incentives with the brownfield cleanup program for any developer.
Sure.
I mean, I think that's a component of the program.
Right, but how much incentive and, you know, how much private money was put into the cleanup? I mean, I think that that's a really important question that residents want to know the answer to. How can we get that information? Does anyone know? I don't. Do you guys know, have any idea how you can get the information as to?
The DEC website would have, have all the background, I would think, of the cleanup. They track the projects, am I correct?
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. To take it a step further, though, in many respects, the cleanup is done. That's done. So the Cometa application, while it does reference very often the cleanup, this application, the new development, is far removed from the fact that we now have a cleaned-up brownfield, which regrettably was on spec under conditions that I'll talk about a little later. And so there is some difficulty that I have in the disconnect. But from a standpoint of what had happened versus where we are now, one doesn't necessarily need to reflect back on that cleanup as part of the Cometa application.
So I'll read the letter out loud. Okay. Yep. To whom it may concern regarding Westport Crossing's Cometa application. The board of trustees of the Village of Pittsburgh has been asked by Mark IV Enterprises for a letter of support in regard to the application for financial assistance to Cometa for the Westport Crossing project in the village. This letter will confirm that the board of trustees supports the granting of financial assistance to the residential portion of the project. Please contact us if you have any questions. That's the letter.
So the definition of financial assistance, that, how are we defining? What's financial assistance mean?
I believe the folks from the Cometa program can speak to that and will in the hearing, you know. This is, in other words, we don't grant tax abatements, the village has never granted a tax abatement. This is at the county level. This is simply supporting essentially the mission of Cometa, which is to support developments that do things that are in the public good. They, you know, create jobs, they hire local vendors, they provide public amenities in addition. So that mission of Cometa is part of what we would support. And I feel very comfortable doing that. That's, that's supporting businesses, you know, any business. And, you know, another example of that would be right down here on Shane Place where the flour mill is and the grain silo. Dorothy, correct me if I'm wrong, is it this year they went back on the tax rolls?
Yes.
Yeah, because they, they had received a Cometa, you know, tax rebate for the last 10 years, and so that's for the flour mill and the grain silo. So, you know, it's, it's a fairly, I would say, common practice and certainly one that, you know, I think I support the mission of Cometa. I think it's a really, it's a great mission for our county, for anywhere in the county.
I'm sure Cometa will talk about this more.
Yeah.
Lisa, specifically, this is for the Jobs Plus pilot incentive program, which, just very briefly, is a tax abatement program offered through Cometa to abate property taxes over a 10-year period of time. And along with other things that are enclosed in the Jobs Plus program, part of it includes a increase in jobs by 10% over a three-year period of time. And there's other elements of it, but essentially, it's a 90% abatement in the first year that goes down by 10% for every year thereafter. So without calculating for the net present value of those future abatements, you could simply say it's approximately a 50% discount on taxes over a 10-year span. It actually goes down a little bit, sorry, I was wrong, it goes by, down by 5% each year, so it's 90%. Am I right? No, I was right the first time.
It's 10% every year.
Yeah, I was looking at the wrong one. Jobs Plus. So it's 10% each year, so it's 90, 80, all the way down to 10, and then in the 10th year, there's no abatement.
Yeah, it's, it's fully back on the tax rolls as, as we just discussed with the flour mill and, you know, now they're back on the, on the tax roll.
So one of the requirements to Mayor, Mayor Plummer's comment was the project must use all local labor, local labor for the construction of new expanded or renovated facilities. However, there are conditions by which you can, for various reasons, move away from local labor, but it has to be for very specific reasons that the county outlines. I think, you know, the Jobs Plus, of course, the goal is to create employment opportunities. And I believe in the application, one of the comments on page, page five, which one are you going for? They mark off Jobs Plus and says the applicant must commit 10% in full-time equivalent employment measured on the existing impacted employee base over a three-year period. And then it goes on to say the required number of jobs is one.
One job.
One job. So there are other comments that I have, I just wanted to read that out in case you know. The program is in large part there for projects that would otherwise in the county be a blighted area or significantly under addressed community, where without this work and this effort from the county, these jobs wouldn't get, well, not only just jobs, but these projects wouldn't get done. And by getting the support from the county, it would create some jobs but also improve a area that needs it, right? So as I think about, at least my position anyway broadly, if the county has funds to support developers, there's opportunities in Monroe County, aside from a very attractive strip of land across the historic Erie Canal, that they could commit capital to, to support local development, to help blighted communities, communities that could stand for affordable housing. In the application, they also ask for a relief from the affordable housing component of it as well. And so, again, there's, has some challenges I have here.
I, was there, was that, I, I thought there was an amendment to the application, because when I went online.
10% set aside for affordable housing.
Okay.
Cometa regulations in this application, so really considering this is anti-affordable.
Okay, so let me just then correct, the original application.
Because that's what I saw online, that's why I was saying I had that online.
The original application did request that, let's see. Right, while we recognize the community's benefits to the affordable component, the community benefits to the environmental radiation, to this blighted area, based on the approval and adopted housing, you had asked for that to be set aside. So you're suggesting here today new information that I didn't have from when I printed this originally.
My understanding has been amended, and so now 10% of the units, as I understand it, and help me, fellas, 10% of the units now will be affordable housing. So, you know, for example, for like seniors in our community, they want to downsize and then they're on a fixed income, this could be an opportunity then for them to age in our community, just as an example, is that where we're going?
That's exactly right, as an example.
Okay.
We will be required to set aside 10% for affordable housing, people, people who will be eligible, those making 60% lower than the average income in Monroe County.
Is it Monroe County or surrounding region?
It's, it's locality, you know, Village Pittsburgh or Monroe County, whichever is lower, so we'd be not locally, yes.
Wow, so that's a big difference.
When was the application? And I did just appear last week?
Two weeks ago, I think, or a week ago? I don't know off the top of my head, but.
Okay.
So it was submitted to Cometa, we withdrawn that request for a later.
Okay.
Yeah, because I was online, I think last week, and I saw it. Is there, maybe on Monday, it was Monday when I was on, so it must have been recent.
Is there anything else that was amended besides that piece that we should know about?
No.
I've got lots of comments, you want to go? Well, in the interest of efficiency, I have expressed some of my concerns at past meetings, I've also said my piece in the resolution. This isn't to take a shortcut around conversation, we can continue after a motion, but at this time, I will make a motion that we adopt the resolution in front of us that would revoke the letter of support for Cometa.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call. Or back for discussion, I'm sorry, you're right, we still discuss second.
Yeah. So I just want to read some thoughts and comments into the record. This is a bit of a brainstorm, we have time, we have 5:30.
Yeah, we have to switch over to set up, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. So these are important things. So let me first say that where we are today, this progress and that we've made to this point, where years ago, I think to no fault of the zone, cleaned up a brownfield, a process that some may argue wasn't a perfect process, but it's been done and we, I think sincerely, you know, appreciate you doing that. Regrettably, the site plan and the application that came before us hadn't been fully approved or was still in litigation, so much of the brownfield process that's now cleaned up, as I think about this Cometa application, and I don't necessarily think it should be included, what we have now is essentially a vacant parcel that somebody will certainly want to, and I know PCP and DeMarzo's want to develop that, and I think it's great that we're moving forward in that. But we have a rich history here that resident Wiestra had mentioned of litigation and of cost on the village. And part of the process of the approval required this property to go through what's called an LWRP, a local waterfront revitalization program. And in the LWRP, some of the policies that we talk about are public benefits, right, and public amenities. And those are requirements to receive an LWRP approval. And in the first phase of the LWRP approval process, the application, as it was presented at the time, was denied consistency with the LWRP for a variety of reasons that one can go back and look at. There was a request to receive a appeal process through what's called a 121-5H, where essentially the HPB was able to look at the project and determine if anything more could have been done for it to be consistent with the local waterfront program. They determined, no, nothing could, but also another line in there that was incredibly important for them to receive their final approval in the local waterfront revitalization program was the project had to be an overwhelming public benefit. So to me, an overwhelming public benefit is something that includes certainly public amenities, but also focuses on the public, not private, not private property, but on the public. And one of the challenges I had in reading through the application for Cometa was that many of the reasons why they're suggesting they need the abatement is because of the cost of the public amenities. But this was foundational to them receiving the local waterfront revitalization program consistency approval from the HPB, that it was an overriding public benefit. They knew that this project had to not privatize the canal, a historic landmark, a historic resource to our entire community. They had to create an environment by which the public would be open and welcome to using the amenity that is the canal for all of us. I believe it was Mr. DeMarzo in one of the meetings had once said that he didn't expect many of the public to go here. It wasn't going to be, I think, quote, "a public destination location." Another term used in the approval process was this was going to be a contemporary luxury apartment community. Using the term "community" not as part of the broader village, but. but as an entity in and of itself. So my challenge is, I think about CAMITA. CAMITA's objective is the greater public good and helping create opportunities for jobs when there aren't any, creating an environment where we're able to redevelop old buildings that might be in disrepair or to address blight. Tax dollars, I know here I'm representing village residents, but I also think about the broader community and how we spend our dollars. And I think there are far greater projects that should receive support than what I would consider to be a fairly affluent community with a spot of land that is highly valued and will be developed on. And the resources, the public amenities, that have been required in the application process and the approval process, these are foundational, critical elements that are part of any application. And we shouldn't, as residents or as county residents, have to pay for something that is embedded in our code as a foundational component of living on the canal and why we have the local waterfront plan to begin with. So as I read through the application and the rationale as to why we would present an approval, paying for essentially the amenities that are embedded in our code that our residents have requested as part of major development along the canal front shouldn't be the reason why the county has to foot the bill or our residents have to foot the bill as a percentage. Another element. We have a lot of landlords here in the village that I think are critical to providing a variety of housing options for our residents. Not everybody needs to own, not everybody wants to own. We have some wonderful landlords who have worked hard to keep their properties in good repair. Admittedly, we do have fairly strict standards to address windows, doors, siding, roofing. These are costs that these landlords and property owners are held to at a standard, frankly, above the standard of the new development, coupled with the fact that a tax abatement program puts the existing landowners, land property owners, at a disadvantage to a new, larger development when they're receiving a tax break, but the existing property owners, landlords, do not. My frustration here is, let's not race to the bottom. We have a beautiful spot of land. It's going to be developed. I don't think, and I can't imagine I'm going to be wrong in this, but absent of CAMITA approval, a project will move forward that will be appropriate for the village as per the code that we've allowed and already approved. So I'm looking forward to that and working with the applicant. But as far as supporting a CAMITA application, I certainly cannot.
Someone still going?
I have a lot more stuff, but I'll take a pause.
Well, no, you know, this is your opportunity.
I know. This is just a little bit on access. So it's been the developer's intention, I think in general, to talk about unprecedented access to the canal as one of the rationales why this is such an amazing new project and support that as a public amenity. But the applicant has stated in public meetings, and I forget which one it was, maybe June 7th of last year to the HPB, that unprecedented simply means that there's access, whereas currently there's not. Now, I know there's lots of other gazebos and sidewalks and things that are embedded and required, but access alone does not suggest no variety of public benefit, nor one that the county should pay for or the village residents should pay for. And this is also an interesting point, as I flipped through the application, that was unique to me. So the comment that the project, if we don't receive CAMITA, these costs and the interest rate environment would make it unfeasible to obtain adequate financing to move the project forward. That was on page three. But then on page six, it says, "Has the applicant made any arrangements for financing?" "Yes, we're in the process of finalizing the terms of construction loan now, or with a local bank." Well, if you know anything about banks, banks aren't going to approve a residential, commercial residential loan unless the cap rates are pretty good. And a tax break at $8 million or $9 million spread over 10 years about has a 1% hit to cap rates. Now, if you're looking at it at $25 million instead of a $50 million, it's still going to be a net positive project. So my question, I guess, maybe it's an open-ended rhetorical question, is, was bank financing contingent upon a CAMITA approval? And if not, are you just simply trying to lower your cost of financing? My guess is the bank didn't work all the way to the end of the underwriting process with the contingency that you received a CAMITA approval. Thinking on another end, I believe it was $54 million, $53 million of total costs. The equity would be about $13.25 million. So I don't know what the anticipated expected rate of return would be on that $13.25 million with or without CAMITA. That's not information that you're required to provide. I don't have anything further.
I think Jan had her.
Just one second, please. You can submit that to Dorothea also if you can work it to the comments.
Yeah, it's more brainstorming.
Oh, well, either way, but I'm just saying, you know, that is a matter of record. Yep. Did you have an additional comment?
No, I just think that Jan...
Yeah, yeah, I see that. But we're just back at the board discussing. That's the only reason. I see you, Jan. I didn't, you know.
I don't.
Okay, so, yes. Comment?
Hi, Jan. I was starting by church and one, couple of questions. You said there was some criteria to CAMITA use, one that creates employment. I assume that means somebody who lives in the village employment, not just employment from somebody who lives in Brockport. I don't know. But one, I guess it doesn't matter.
That would be a question during the CAMITA hearing, perhaps?
Yeah. Second, the affordable housing. How long does that last? And does it get phased as the CAMITA tax forbearance gets phased? Or I'm trying to, this is a very small village. It's a very large project. It affects every one of us who lives here. None of us are more than, you know, half a mile or a mile away. So every one of us has a stake in this project. And CAMITA is not something, maybe you could help me. If we know how much taxes we get now because the flour mill isn't getting abatement anymore. I mean, that's a much smaller project, I understand. So it would be just a bitterness compared to this project, I'm assuming. I haven't seen any numbers anywhere, so I don't know how much we're not going to get in proper taxes. What I do know is, we pay in this village for amenities that the entire town takes very active advantage of. It's always an interesting conversation with people who live in the town who want to tell us what the project, what any project should look like and what kind of restaurants we should have, et cetera. We're the ones that pay the tax to keep the canal way clean, et cetera. So it's kind of hard to put your hands around a project that doesn't have, don't tell us how much money is involved. We don't know that there would be people that, affordable housing, would that be local people, affordable housing? Or is it going to be somebody from, again, Brockport who wants to move here so they can live out their life in our community? I, you know, I don't know.
I think in both those instances, both jobs and residents, it could be anybody. The jobs, I think, are within a county radius or some sort of...
Yeah, that's the benefit, was if that's the benefit, you're getting the CAMITA money. Are we really, the people who live in this village, are we going to benefit? Because we won't get taxes.
Right, right.
What are the taxes right now on the property? They're like...
About $2,500.
$2,500. So even in the first year, the taxes would be what, like, I don't know, $85,000? Something like that?
A catch exemption.
Yeah, you know, so we're starting at kind of zero, and at least we start to collect something. Is that my understanding? That's greater than? In other words, we're not taking the, there's no loss to take because we're not even collecting $3,000 a year? I mean, I know you're couching it as a loss, but I understand...
I would assume that our costs are going to increase over that timeframe too as the project gets built, that anything, whether it's the, I don't know, building inspector or the consultants we phone in.
All the consultants are actually paid for by the applicant. All the reviews going forward, you know, everything's paid by the applicant. The village does not incur those expenses.
Except for things like the building inspector and engineering, so that works with them.
That is incurred by the applicant.
So the applicant will be paying part of the salary of the building inspector.
There's an independent inspector, not our building inspector, who will be, am I correct, is overseeing this project? That has been agreed to, the board, well, the prior board approved the RFP for the consultants to oversee the process. And so it's for preservation, it's the building inspector, engineering. They're all outside consultants that are paid for by the applicant going forward. So they're neutral parties, they're just looking at it, you know, working, ensuring that everything is in compliance with the approvals. So we don't incur those expenses.
I think I'd like to make a comment. I appreciate you giving us an example of the flour mill and grain silo as in a comparison. Being a preservationist and being a history of preservation, you know, that building was an original building on the canal that has been renovated and restored. This is a brand-new project that is massive and very different than what the rest of the village looks like. So I don't really feel comfortable comparing those two projects with each other, just for the record.
Oh, I don't see a comparison. I was just giving examples of another project that was, had applied for CAMITA and was under CAMITA, that's all. There's no comparison. And, you know, having served on a number of preservation boards myself for over 35 years, I can tell you that new buildings are buildings of their own time.
Yeah.
You know, it's not Disneyland. So whatever's going to be built there, regardless, you know, the mass and the scale, and, you know, that has always been a concern. We've all, you know, been down the path for more than a decade on that. That was pretty much baked in when the R5 code was written, you know, in, I guess it was 2009 or '10, and adopted by, you know, previous boards and administrations. So that's the starting point. That's always the starting point. You start with your code. And that's why we are where we are after 13 years.
So I think the village tax portion, so if it's an assessed value at $25 million, so let's say $54 million, $3 million goes into build it, and it gets assessed at $25 million. I think that's what the applications suggest. But I think the village amount would be around $12,000 at face, at full amount. I think, so...
I'll sign it in now.
Probably.
$12,000.
So the village component alone was, the village component, yeah, I'm just looking at the village component, right? So on a much broader scale, this is about tax abatements across the entire community versus just in the village. In the village, it might be a $50,000 or $75,000 difference, but based on the cost of litigation over years and the work to essentially move things forward without the full support, you know, work being part of the LWRP process on the planning and zoning board, a lot of the considerations that we suggested to get into the project was, you know, move forward to the next part of the LWRP approval after it was initially denied consistency. And I just feel like of all the residents that I've spoke to, broadly speaking, they don't support giving a tax break to a developer that's tried to push a project through in ways that has generally been upsetting. At the same time, residents want to move this forward. So I personally think by not supporting the CAMITA, it's an expression of a general community perspective, but also understanding that we're moving forward.
Okay, thank you for that. Is Dan Spitzer online?
No, he's not.
Okay, I know, because he was going to try to assume, and he's, you know, Dan Spitzer's the attorney for the board. Just, I didn't know if he was online, if he had a comment, that's all. Any other thoughts? Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Trustee Licken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Okay, we have a quorum. It has passed.
Motion passed.
If I may, I would just like to, Dorothea, your comment...
No, the mayor, the mayor doesn't have to vote. You only vote to break a tie. I think it's... I'm being mayor.
You're going to be here during the public hearing, the CAMITA public hearing after this?
I'll be here, but I'm not recording or...
I was just wondering...
I'm setting it up to record.
Yeah, I was wondering if our clerk would do us the favor of delivering this resolution to the CAMITA board on behalf of the village. That wouldn't be too burdensome.
Yeah. You're happy of this.
I'll make a motion then that our clerk deliver the resolution to the CAMITA board on behalf of the village.
Second, then.
Trustee Licken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Okay, with no other business before us, I make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Roll call.
Trustee Marshall?
Aye.
Trustee Licken?
Aye.
Trustee Coe?
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion dismissed. Yes.